President.
All right, well, good afternoon and welcome to the regular Board of Trustees meeting of the Hayward Area Shoreline Planning Agency on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We're beginning at three oh two. Welcome all. Devin, would you do the roll call, please?
Director Loski, Chair Dennis Loski.
Here.
Park District. Glendrady, Hayward Area Rapid Park District.
Here.
Mr. Manu, Hayward.
I'm here.
Um, also, will you call the role of the prospective house of trustees?
Duncan, Orla Long Sanitary District. And Eric Henchy, County Mosquito Abatement District.
Here.
And will you announce the staff members present?
I'm Devin Reeve, Principal Planner with East Bay Regional Park District. We also have with us from the Park District, Planner and Amanda Sanders, Senior Administrative Specialist. We also have Brian Masco with HARD, Eric Pearson, City of Hayward, Silver Shaw, City of Hayward. On the phone, we have Sierra Cannon, City of Hayward. All. On Orla Long Sanitary, we have Jimmy.
Welcome all, and we also have one member of the public here with us today. Would you introduce yourself?
I'm Matt R. What happened, but today I'm here as a member of the Sanitary District.
Excellent, thank you. So today's meeting is held pursuant to the Brown Act. Board members and staff are participating in person. The public is more than welcome to participate via phone and video conferencing. And we'll now move to the agenda, which is, our first item is public comments. And there are two ways with which to, or there are probably three ways to make public comments, but the two ways we can do via Zoom is, Devin, would you explain, or Devin, would you explain, please?
Yes, the public can comment in two ways, three ways, excuse me. To A, Sanders at EB Parks Network. That's one person.
I'll look for a show of hands. Do we have anyone that would like to speak in public comment? Turner, go right ahead.
So, uh, something that obviously concerns us all out here. And, uh, some jurisdictions around the bay are beginning to cross the city across the bay. Uh, we have something right in our own backyard here. It is, uh, the best practice, which is the horizontal levy project. Orla Long Sanitary District, uh, community facility on the seashore. And it has been a pilot program for a number of years. It still remains a pilot program. Uh, where they're testing different ways to filter stormwater and other things, uh, even named plants. But it's something that would provide, uh, home surge resilience, sea level rise resilience, increased habitat, and increased access to recreation, and could also possibly function as a program. Highway network. Uh, something like that would be a tremendous regional asset. Billions of dollars in multi-agencies. But up to this point, no one has been looking at that, even though that was the original idea. So I just wanted to throw it out there that, uh, there aren't very many bodies that are close here that have as many august bodies associated with them. And any conversations on that might be good.
All right, thank you very much.
What's the name of the program?
For the horizontal levy project.
Horizontal levy process.
Would you just say your name for the record?
Matt R.
All right, um, I see no one else has entered the Zoom room, and we don't have any, um, thumbs up for public comment. Amanda, I'll ask a question again. Did we receive any emails correspondents? All right, thank you. So we've completed that portion of the, um, business for today. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of the House meeting held on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The minutes are before you, trustee members, um.
Slowly memorize, and I move on.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Uh, do I have a second? Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Devin, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Manu.
Hey.
Glendrady.
Yes.
And Chair Loski.
Yes.
That's it.
All right, um, we'll now move to, uh, the City of Hayward project updates. Welcome.
Hi, there are no updates.
Excellent, thank you. No news is good news, I guess. Okay, and then we'll get ready to meet up the House of JPA Renewal Discussion.
I'd like to introduce Hanson Bridget.
Devin, I apologize. The audio is cutting in and out a bit. Are folks able to hear me?
Yes, you're good, here you go.
Okay, wonderful. Did you kick it over to me? Was that the last bit of what you said? I couldn't quite hear it.
Yes, exactly.
All right, wonderful. Good afternoon, trustees. It's wonderful to see you again. Thank you for having me. Devin, if you wouldn't mind, oh yes, perfect, sharing our slide up here. So we received a considerable amount of really thoughtful input from the trustees, the TAC and agencies, agency attorneys, which we have incorporated into an updated draft of the JPA. However, in the course of receiving input and feedback on the updated JPA, really highlighted what we noted as a pretty significant divide among the members and prospective members on a couple of discrete issues, the issues of dues increases and management of HASPA. And while, as I said, this is sort of a discreet bucket of issues, we believe the difference in viewpoints here are significant enough that it would be appropriate for the members to resolve these issues before the JPA is finalized. I think also these issues implicate really the sort of core of the JPA and its strength in functioning going forward. So there's an importance to resolving these issues before finalizing the JPA. So in short, we've heard from some members and prospective members that a significant increase in dues above the current amount would be untenable. Because some agencies really don't have the means to collect additional revenue in the ways that other agencies might. Additionally, some agencies don't have the staff resources to take a turn managing HASPA as part of the agency rotation that was originally contemplated. Now, there's an inherent tension between these issues because the readily available solutions to the issue of management of HASPA really are either to hire or contract for a manager or to limit the rotation to a smaller group of members managing HASPA with the non-rotating members paying a portion of the cost. But both of these options would very likely require an increase in dues and costs. Additionally, in the event that HASPA expands its operations in the future, we sort of drafted this JPA to give that maximum flexibility. An expansion may require an increase in dues in order to support it. So at this time, the TAC is recommending that the trustees approve a twelve-month extension to the current JPA in order to give the parties time to really develop a holistic solution. This solution may involve different elements, including a tiered due structure, which was contemplated in the original term sheet, possibly with commensurate weighted voting and consideration kind of working through the process of hiring or contracting with a third-party manager for HASPA. But the end goal is really to develop an equitable solution that responds to the needs of the current and future member agencies. And that is, I believe, the item before you this afternoon. And Devin, I will hand it back to you in case you have anything more you'd like to add.
All right, um. I add one note that from the discussions. Comments that we've gotten. Thank you. The, um, that's been done to date by the agency attorneys and by your discussion in the April. Are mostly very close to an agreement on most of the provisions. The PA agreement, I just wanted to remind you that that's an amazing success. But there are these few last remaining items. What's chance to discuss?
Okay, so let's, um. Go ahead, Francisco.
Uh, being you to HASPA, I don't know what the dues are. I didn't see them anywhere. What, what, what is being paid at the moment?
Paying, well, the three agencies, HARD, City of Hayward, and East Bay Regional Park District currently pay twelve thousand dollars a year. So what voting controls are there to increase those dues? Due structure currently, the, well, Nicole can explain.
I'm sorry, I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you, Devin. It's really cutting out.
Oh, I'll turn it over to you to talk about dues.
I, I think we kind of made a somewhat of a consensus that we would look into a tiered system. If I remember correctly, at the last time we met.
At that.
So nothing has been done.
Well, do you want to address the tiered due structure?
I'm sorry, I, I, the audio cut out, so I couldn't hear the question. Can you ask it again?
Yeah, um, the Cesar Manu was talking about the tiered due structure and how it got brought up at the previous meeting. I don't know if you want to explain a little bit more about our thinking.
Sure, sure, sure. So the tiered due structure, the concept of a tiered due structure was included in the term sheet originally. There was language in the term sheet that the dues should allow for a tiered due structure or an automatic escalator. And because we didn't have any of the sort of meat on the bones for a tiered due structure, that wasn't something that we could draft. What we drafted was the automatic escalator. But a tiered due structure is something that the trustees could certainly, um, as we were discussing it at the last meeting, could certainly decide to implement. What we are thinking now is that that tiered due structure, I think, is probably pretty central to giving agencies the confidence that they are, um, sort of the clarity of what they might be signing up for from a, from a financial perspective. And so we think it's worth building out the tiered due structure now before finalizing the JPA rather than leaving it to some possible future, um, action. Is that responsive to your question?
Thank you, Nicole. Does that mean that we're having to spend some time today coming up with figures for a smaller agency? In my mind, that would be a good way to spend some time.
Well, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
We pay, so Orla Long mosquito, put out some numbers, and let's negotiate, put out a number.
Or maybe, yeah, I, I, I think if, if I can sort of suggest some things, we can do that. I mean, so it's the dues increase and how we're going to manage this agency are the two sticker points, right? Or the points that we've identified as the reason we're going to extend the JPA or possibly extend the JPA. So if that's the case, um, I know I have a number of questions on, on dues increases and, and would that be, um, do that, let's just one of the stuff out first? Okay, so.
There are plenty of cookies, so.
Excellent, so let's.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I apologize. I apologize for interrupting. I, like I said, having a little trouble hearing. Um, the, I think there is some push and pull between these pieces, right? The, the dues, the management structure, what it might look like. I think the, there's a lot of value to developing something holistically because chances are there's going to be something that folks aren't totally in love with on one side in order to get something that they need a little bit more, that has more value to them on the other side. And it might be better to sort of give the TAC some time to work through some proposals and bring those back so that, you know, kind of having the understanding that it's going to touch on these different pieces, um, rather than kind of getting into the nuts and bolts of, um, of what these different elements might look like now. I think it's a little bit early stages, and that's really what the, the work of the TAC is going to be for, you know, the, hopefully not too long, extension that we have, is to kind of work through that proposal so that we can bring something back that is more complete and has had the opportunity to be vetted by staff and legal counsel and kind of work through those pieces. But I think that, that holistic approach might, um, might be a little more complete and efficient.
I, I, I agree with you, Nicole, but, um, I, I think the, I see my colleagues here chomping at the bit to say something. So maybe we, uh, we'll use a holistic approach. We won't get into nuts and bolts, but there are some real concerns that I think that, uh, I know I have, and then I think my fellow trustees do also. So, um, you know, we've got a little time, so if you don't mind, let's, let's, uh, I'd be interested to hear what my colleagues say. And on the issue of, let's go with dues increase or the way we'll structure the dues of this organization. Uh, uh, so Lou, you had your hand up. Go right ahead.
Yeah, well, I think it's way too early to talk about what, uh, dues are because we're just sort of pulling those out of the air, you know. Uh, right now, I think what we need to do is, and this is what I hope you would come back with, you know, what, what exactly is, is, are we? Fine, I think we have an idea, but I want to get it better. What's the mission? Then what's that going to cost everybody? What's the absolute cost, okay? And then it's, now, if it's a million dollars a year, I mean, is that what's going to run? I don't know. How is that, who's going to pay a million dollars a year to join this mission? I mean, in other words, how is, how are we going to manage? Because one, one idea was to hire a general manager to run, you know, some mission. So, you know, the question is, what is exactly, you know, that could affect, cost could affect the mission. Maybe the mission is not going to be with a general manager. I mean, it's going to be else, you know. So I'm just saying, I, I don't think the goal and the cost have been really refined out because what, you need to know what the costs are before you can negotiate. Are we going to break it down? Because it may be too much for anybody, you know, I don't know. But I mean, you know, part of the, the issue, you know. I also had another question, but I'll, I'll come up later.
Okay, well, if I can respond, correct me if I'm incorrect here. I mean, HASPA's been around for a number of years. We've changed our mission statement, uh, just very recently. And, you know, it used to be a bunch of wonderful people that were mostly citizens that came down here, kind of started this, got people to join us. We'd look at the shoreline and say, this needs to be preserved, this needs to be purchased, this needs to be protected, this needs to be, habitat needs to be restored, and that was the mission. We kind of, I won't say we've done that, but we've kind of completed that, that role, in my opinion. And we've moved now to our newer mission statement, or our newest mission statement, which says, we need to deal with sea level rise and climate change. And we've, we're very successful in only paying twelve thousand a year with three agencies and getting a grant for, was it four hundred fifty grand or it was over four hundred thousand and under five hundred thousand? That was a lot of money, and that was given to us by, uh, who was it? MTA, Metron? Or Caltrans, pardon me. And, and so we've got a master plan. We've got a plan in place. Now, what do we do? And then it was, it's a great plan. It's all written out for us. The way to do it, it's just that they said three years ago, we need a billion dollars, which is probably two billion dollars now. So I think Lou's right. We need to define what we would need. What would an executive director do if we, uh, or, or what could we do amongst ourselves increasing dues-wise? What could change? Could we identify specific projects in the master plan and get grant? I mean, because we're not going to pay for it ourselves, obviously. We're going to have to get somebody else's money to participate. So, you know, just out there, my opinion is, if we, this organization needs to get more members, one, lighten the load or lighten the skill, and we also need to identify projects and to get them funded and keep it in that direction. We won't do it all at once. And so if, like Lou said, if we can define what the role of a, of, of, well, we'll get into member agencies later, but what would the dues change be? I personally think the management of this. Their, what's their job description? What do we expect about it? What are the deliverables? Uh, and we can, I, I think that's what we need to discuss. Uh, as far as, you know, money, I, I, I don't know.
Don't have a figure because, you know, we need to, this is what we're going to do, and this is how much it costs. And here are three ways, you know, or we can do this, it's going to cost this, or we can do this, and it's going to be some, some alternative or alternative. I'm just saying, uh, you know, say, this is what's going to cost a year to do this. How to do this? Are the alternatives, who else can do this, or whatever that is. But I mean, you know, we can't just say, oh, I'll pay five percent, I'll raise you five. You know, what does that mean? It's just, it's just something in the air, you know.
I'm not really sure what is first. What is first? The turn a manager, which could be, what, a hundred? Or figure out what the projects are, and if it's the overall project, then it's two billion dollars. Once we have at least what the director will earn, the fees that are my benefits and everything, that's my, our figure. And what are the projects that we run, and what would they cost? Um, and then, once we have that, there's a need for eight hundred thousand dollars a year to run this play. And we need to figure out who are the new members and what will the fees of the new members be if they're not size of HARD or East Bay or City of Hayward, or Loma should not probably pay what we are. Possibility. Those are all the things that I guess, as Nicole is proposing, needs to be worked out by staff. I don't think we.
Right, but, but as, pardon me for interrupting.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But as, as, as the governance group, just by saying, we would like to hire a, um.
Manager.
Whatever we, and we would call it that, a manager with a staff of one, and that might be a grant writer or a grant person, or hire a general manager or executive director with grant abilities, because we'll go small, because we don't have any money. And we'll throw that out there. That's what we'd like to do. And then say, pick off one project that we could identify because we've got the master plan and that with the help of our technical advisory staff, which, which, uh, you know, it's, it's a game. I mean, the SS Bay Restoration Authority, uh, who's giving out twenty-five million a year, we're, we're in line every once in a while, but they do it geographically because everybody got mad when they didn't the first couple of years. So I don't know if Hayward Shoreline is on the list for next year or the year after, but the technical advisory staff is smarter than to figure all that out. And then we can say, as a government agency, that's a good idea. Let's work on the. That's governance. And then you guys, technical advisory people, figure out how that.
How much is needed.
And with, and how much is needed. And, you know, once again, we, uh, I don't know how we do the, um, dues increases, but I, I, I think there's, there's a lot of things brought up about, say, and I know this is getting down to the nuts and bolts, but we have a long agenda. You know, just some of the things I've thought about was, uh, you know, it's great to have tiered dues, but shouldn't be just on your budget. I mean, I, I think it also should be the benefit you're going to, what are you going to get? What's your agency going to get out of it? What's the threat? Uh, and I, I, I only say this, um. Who, who is threatened the most? Who has the most stake in this? Does that make sense? I don't want to say, I don't want to say, eh, we're the regional parks. And I'm, I'm not using the regional parks, although that's my example. Regional parks in HARD, go ahead. We lose the Hayward Shoreline, uh, Bay Trail, we'll move it a thousand feet that way. It won't cost much at all. Orla Long sinks. What happens there? You got a clarifier. You're not going to pull that out, move it back a thousand feet. Who's got the most, I mean, as we've talked about before, that power plant over there, uh, one would think that would take a big hit, but from what I've been told, they don't give a damn. They're ready to clear out and just say, let it sink.
And it's supposed to, it's supposed to go underwater by twenty thirty.
Yeah, uh, but some of the other utilities around here, there is a train line out here, there's, uh, other infrastructure around here that people want to protect, and it has a value to them. So that would encourage them more to join us, uh, in my opinion. But I, I, I think, uh, just the idea of basing the, the tiered structure on people's budgets, I, I, I think, technical advisory committee, I hope they.
Also, the size of personnel, uh, Ms. Duncan mentioned that, personnel, the size of her staff is smaller compared to our staff. But that would also mean.
That, there's no question there.
Yeah.
But, but also, and the idea has been brought up of in-kind services. Uh, HARD doesn't exactly have a big staff. They're parks and recreation. It's, it's not their mission to save the, the shoreline, but they've got a beautiful facility here. They do a pretty good job of running these meetings. In-kind services can be the same as dues, in my opinion, or it should be at least.
Jake saw possible, so good luck with it.
So anyway, Rita, go right.
I, I, I want to touch bases on what Lou said. I think I agree with what has been said as, as far as, so hiring a staff person with, uh, why I don't want to make this money for it. But I, I personally don't really, I mean, the plan is a big thing, you know, so it's, it's like, what, what is a priority in what we're trying to accomplish? Maybe flushing that out and developing some kind of job description, someone that we would want, um, to lead it. And then what kind of salary would we need to pay them to?
Well, it, it may be that, you know, we have a, in my opinion, we have a, you know, we've done a report as to what the dangers are, what the, you know, what the impossible solutions, right? And then I think at this point, what we're doing is developing a, a strategy on how to do it and what it's going to cost for, uh, you know, an agency to handle some of this. And then, and then it's going to cost this much, right? And then we're going to say to, to ourselves, are we going to do, are we going to do this, you know? If not, then we need to say, City of Hayward, county, city, state government, whatever that is, this is, this is the plan of action. This is the danger, this is the plan of action, you know, uh, the public, you know, and it really, we can't handle it. This is a major ag, you know, agencies that need another JPL. I mean, I don't even know that this, this district, HASPA, has is the right district. Maybe it should be from Alameda Creek to our portion, Alameda Creek to San Lorenzo Creek or something. I mean, in other words, you know, what is the, the proper geography of, of just doing a, an action plan that's, you know, it's supposed to work, you know? And I, and I don't, so I think the best we can do personally is, you know, come up with an action plan, come up with a way of addressing it, and then, you know, set it out there, and whoever, you know, feels that they can handle it, handle it. And maybe, maybe some of us will, I don't know. It may be, it, it could be a way of doing it, you know, but, but I, I certainly don't, you know, expect this park district to save the shoreline, you know.
Not by yourself, absolutely.
Not by ourselves, no, because we have.
Needs to be a concerted effort.
Because we have other programs, we have other playgrounds, we have, you know, we have things to do. And it's just, and, you know, if you think about City of, of, uh, Foster City, well, Foster City is, the entire city is surrounded by water, right? So they're, they're eminently, you know, they, they are the ones that took their proactive action to save their city, right? And so they're doing a, the Dutch system of, of, of a dike essentially, you know, that's up to them, you know. But we're, we're not that far, you know, removed from that. I mean, the city eventually, you know, all this is, is endangered, you know, the, the county area, San Lorenzo, Hayward. It's not just the infrastructure, it's also the economy, you know. It's like, if those buildings go underwater, they're not paying taxes, right?
My understanding you say that you don't think it has such a role?
I don't think HASPA, my own prejudice is I don't think that HASPA is, as it's organized now, is, is viable for a long-term thing. And right now, we're, what we've done is we've evaluated, we've, we've paid for a study, we evaluated, what I think we're doing now is evaluating a solution to that study, and here's a proposal, how to handle it, like a JPL or. what I think we're gonna doing now is evaluating a solution to that study, and here's the proposal, how to handle it, like a JPL, or whatever that is. And then, when it's out there, you know, it's gonna cost a million dollars a year, well, I don't know. I don't- I don't see how- how any small agency is gonna be able to come up with that. And I don't know if there's enough grants out there to- to really solve everything, you know, and that we should be-
Well, this is, I mean, this responsibility is it, but ours, to protect our environment where we live at.
Right.
You know, and it's- it's, you know, we could be very selfish and say, okay, we have, we're doing car on one of the two point O, and we can put and save our plant, but that, to me, is very selfish. I- I- I guess I'm- I'm-
I guess what I'm saying is, it- it takes a bigger, it- it's, I'm not- it takes the entire region to start thinking about it and doing it, and we've- and what we've done is, we've provided a plan, and we've provided a- a, uh, system of- of, you know, response to, by the plan. At- at this point, the question is, can- can, you know, mosquito abatement agency, can Oreloma, can, you know, is- I'm- I'm not, you know, I can see a JPL, you'd be involved, and it'd be a tiered thing, but I mean, I don't know that, um, frankly, I don't think park district can carry on forward. And you can use the building if you want, but I'm just saying, in terms of like, sp- spending real money, I don't, you know, it, we have- we have a myriad of other things, other projects to work on.
I wouldn't disagree with you, but I- I'm just saying, as you said, you know, there's in-kind contributions, out contributions, there's- there's a lot. Um, I- I was thinking that the beginning is, and yeah, it's gonna develop, and hopefully, we will attract people that can get the billion dollars that we need.
Yeah.
But it has to start.
Good point, and that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing, yeah, that's what-
Right, and- and I'm just saying that, for me, it's like, that's why we need a designated person to be, you know, developing our vision a little bit more, so we can sell it, or get more people to come and find out where the money is. I mean, because, where's flood control in this? Who's responsible for it?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
You know, I'm just saying, you know, I think Lou's just saying, Rome wasn't built in a day, but, to me, this is the beginning. And then it's, you know, we build on the vision, and we find out this doesn't work, so we make adjustments, like what we're doing right now. Um, but I guess, when you said, develop an action plan and give it to someone, it's just like, well, give it a minute.
Well, that action plan may include some of us, but I think it needs, you know, and that's what we're gonna be deciding. But I don't think that we can substitute now, that is something that we I just find it frustrating, because when I look at our budget, and all the things we need to do, and then we have the shoreline, uh, we were here first, be- among the first, because it was something that, at the time, there was no agency that was doing any shoreline development, shoreline rehabilitation. We were out there, and we took that, that's fine, but when you start, but when the costs go terribly high, that obligation becomes like, well, are we the really, really the agency that's- that's doing this? I mean, we have a small portion of it, but it really affects, it's like we're the, it's like, it's like we use the water, so we have to provide the water for the entire city, it's like, you know, there's a water district for that. There's a sewer district for that, you know?
It's the, I don't see a c- compartmentalized like that.
No.
I think it's all of our responsibility. That's just a sort of typical way that I look at it, and that, um, you know, like it, if we, and we being representative of Oreloma, if we can help move this shoreline protection farther, we're in for it. No, we don't have money, but actually, I have, I know people that have some money, or, you know?
I agree with you, we need to keep it forward, hope that Hard is a future partner, or a partner that mentioned that the last time we met, we need to work on the other folks who will kind of and then, Grant Ryder could probably find us some money, he need to keep going, we just can't give up, because it's just it- because it's such a difficult, it- it- it's a difficult project, but we need to keep working on it.
Well, I'm expressing my opinion, and I mean, it's probably different from Paul's, and it's probably different from Paul, who's, you know, normally here. And, um, and it's five members on our board, so that-
Good to hear that.
But that's just, but that's where I'm, that's what I've been seeing, um. So anyway, I'll- I'll just proceed, I think, at this point, what we're talking about is getting a plan, and, uh, budget, or how it can possibly run, um-
And staff will come up with some figures.
And it may- and it might be, you know, an option A, an option B, wherever that is, and this is what it would cost. Uh, and then how it would be funded, and then, so- so that would be there, so, so, yeah, I- I would I would agree that, you know, end it, and it's a tiered system, I don't know. I have another question, and if we're off this topic, I'd like to ask another question.
Hold it, hold it, we go, let's stay on this topic for just a second. Eric, do you have anything to add?
Oh, I was thinking that board is better served by having lots of input, small and big agencies. Uh, what we are tasked with is finding a way of getting small agencies to be part- part of the group. Funding problem is gonna be a- it's gonna be a nightmare, if I hire somebody to come in. That'll- that'll be kind of on the line, but you need to have a good body of agencies here who all have influence, like what were you saying? You should say, you wanna have a agency, and all- all these agencies are involved when you're writing grants, the more- the more agencies you have on grant writing process, you're likely to get it, I believe. I mean, I- I think you're- you're moving in the right direction, keep- keep people on, as many boards on it, or agencies on here as you can. Though the- the issue of the dues, how you're gonna, you know, get but, uh, keep moving forward. Very positive thing.
Yeah, wi- with or without dues, we've got an organization together, we've got two new members, we have a potential to get more new members. I can't help but think that Alyssa Marquez, who's served on this committee for a number of years, and is now like out-counting supervisor, might have some influence in convincing, uh, the flood control district, who needs to be here. And I think it's a personality deal, but they need to be at the table here, uh, and- and the more people we gain. So it's- it's, I think it's an opportunity, and then, and I don't wanna sound like the old guy, I can sound like the old guy here, but I mean, the most senior person here either, that, you know, I've been here the longest time. This is a great deal, if you're gonna start to do anything, and- and especially with granting, you need an agency. You need an agency, we need an agency that has credibility, and it has a number of different people in it, number of different hands in it, a number of people that are affected by it, and can help that out. So once, and we have that here, we don't have any money, but we don't need any money. We've got a credible agency, and we've got a master plan, we've got a plan. People don't grant you money, just me walking in and saying, hey, give me a grant, I think I can fix the shoreline. But if six or seven agencies come in together, say, this is why we need to protect our shoreline for our agency, which represents and serves this much public in the Bay Area, and, oh, by the way, we've got a plan for it. You don't, it's- it's not like, just throw me a bunch of cash, and I'll throw it in the air and see where it lands. We've got the plan, and we've got the backing, so it- it sounds like doom and gloom, but I, this is going forward good. I- the- the, I don't think the dues are gonna be a big issue, in my opinion, I don't, because we'll never get enough dues to do it. We're- we're- we're just gonna have to figure it out.
Amen to that.
And, uh, maybe it'll be just, uh, well, I don't know what- what it'll look like, but the technical advisory committee and people, uh, Eddie, you're gonna retire in a couple of minutes, why don't you just retire as an admirer, if you would, out of- out of the goodness of your heart, uh, just come here, and then, you know, work, uh, three days a week, and that's, and run the place.
I- I agree with you.
Some type of model like that, but it, please, it's not doom and gloom, we- we get all weird. They, I- I, yeah, there's some people that, uh, have more to gain, uh, I don't know, uh, well, anyway, I- I think we've got opportunities. Especially with Alyssa, especially with, uh, you know, the- the Seals of Rise is coming, it seems to be more and more coming, it's going to be a reality, we're going to have to deal with it. And, uh, as long as we're prepared, I mean, I- I look at, it is futile, when you think about it, I mean, how many miles of shoreline do we have? What's- what's our, I keep forgetting what it is. I- I- I would be so sick, but I'm looking now there at Oreloma, is that six miles?
North of the, north of the region? South of the region?
Yeah, but-
I don't know, I do think-
So- so my point is, we're dealing with this global issue, and we've got six miles of shoreline. What, there's five hundred and thirty-five miles around the San Francisco Bay, right? So, and- and I'd really like to know, and I don't know if some of you technical folks know about it, but what are other agencies doing? I mean, Foster City had to do something, because they're sick, they're- they're the most vulnerable. But are there plans? Does Oakland have a plan? Does, uh, anybody else have a plan? And, I don't really care, but I mean, if we're the ones with a plan, a- a, by, you know, smart consultants, who are renowned throughout the wo- the nation, anyway, uh, and we can come up with some stuff, there are people that are giving away money a lot.
So let's set the standard, to get opportunities, set them up.
The level of the benchmark.
Who's in TAC? I- I keep hearing TAC, who- who are- who are TAC people?
The smart people.
Uh, you're the TAC, okay. So you have Hayward involved, so that's good.
Are- are one of the tax members from your agency?
Pardon me, it's, you know, it's- it's early indulgence, we've got plenty of time, we're almost done. These guys do all the work, so-
Okay.
Introduce yourself, tell us what you do.
I'll subdue
Sure, yeah, 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 come on, we've got time, we'll take less than five minutes.
I'm gonna mean TAC.
So, Eric Pearson, Environmental Services Manager, and, uh-
For the city of Hayward?
For, yes, city of Hayward, and a member of the C A P.
For how many years?
Uh, started off when I was in the planning division with the city of Hayward, so, I don't know, I've probably been with Haspa for
Great history, great, great, great everything, yeah, great.
Hello, uh, Taylor Burchard, just, uh, associate planner with the city of Hayward Planning Division. It's her first hello, and did all of our grant reporting.
Let's see, without being too weird here, a young kid that's vibrant and smart, and if you call him a fellow, and what a great, I'm a fellow. And Pam hardly anything, and they do lots of great, so, but Taylor's a great example.
I keep hearing good things about Taylor.
Eric?
Hello, everyone, my name is Erica Castillo, I'm with Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District, I'm the regulatory and public fair director there. I've been with our district for plus years now. I started out as a technician in the field, I was up in the northern part of the county, so I'm more familiar with the shoreline in Alameda, Oakland, Emeryville, Berkeley, uh, obviously, we cover the whole county, and so, um, I've been out to many of these areas. As part of my role with our district, I also sit on several other committees representing the Bay Area District, um, the Bay Area mosquito control district. So I am also on the advisory committee for the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority, and I'm also the vice chair of the steering committee for the Wetlands Regional Monitoring Program, that is starting to build up right now, and I'm an alternate on the stakeholders forum for the South Bay Salt Pond Restoration Project. So, part of our mission and goal is to stay involved with all the work going on in the shoreline, so we can remind people, the reason we were formed was because salt marsh mosquitoes were so bad here in the Bay Area, that it was almost uninhabitable, so our mission is to protect the residents from that problem, so we like to make sure we are staying involved with that work.
So you're on our TAC?
Yes.
Although, Oreloma and mosquito are not yet full-pledged members?
We are not, so the TAC has expanded, I feel like I'm not talking about this, but we have other agencies that aren't even on the board, that are participating in the TAC as well.
So that's a good idea, then, expand, huh?
Yeah.
Hello, everyone, I'm Eddie Willis, I'm a planner for East Bay Regional Park District, and, um, I've actually been with the park district for a total of nearly twenty years now, so maybe I- I will retire next year. I started as an infant, um, no, but I've, uh, I've been the planning department for about four years now, but I've only recently, within the last six or seven months, have joined the technical advisory committee. Um, we previously have another planner who has left the district, I've come in as the new TAC member, um, with Evan, and our other colleague, uh, she'll introduce herself in a moment, um, but happy to be here, and yeah, that's, probably have.
Great, thank you.
Well, hello ladies, I'm Mike, I'm Brian Lasko, I'm the assistant director of capital development and planning over part of the park. Both five years now. I'm a capital, I'm a part of a capital program over Acta now, or on just, just at the end of the- of the master plan transition I was a brand of facilities, I came on I have plenty of talent, so all part of TAC. All works for, uh, council
Pro bono for us?
We do have some other TAC members, we do have some other TAC members on the, uh, panel, so I'd like to have Jimmy come on.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Dang, I'm the general manager at Oreloma Sanitary District, I've been here for about twelve years. Prior to that, I was in the private sector, um, so, happy to be here.
And Jackie? Let me introduce yourself. Jackie, I'm here then.
Oh, we know who she is now.
The manager for EPTA, and he did a great job. Still can't hear you.
Still can't hear me, still, can you hear me now? Yes, okay, my apologies. Um, my name is Jackie Ziffkin, I'm the general manager of the East Bay Dischargers Authority. We are a joint powers authority for wastewater management, made up of Oreloma, Patstro Valley, and Union Sanitary Districts, and the cities of Hayward and San Leandro. So, we are a partnership for managing wastewater along the same stretch of shoreline that, uh, Haspa oversees, and we are partnering with Haspa and, uh, several of your members on implementing shoreline projects. So, happy to be a part of the TAC.
Jackie, and then, Robbie, the park supervisor for the Hayward Shoreline at East Bay Regional Park, as a committee, Robbie, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Hello, I'm Robbie Perry, East Bay Regional Park District, uh, Hayward Shoreline Supervisor. I've been here for about, with the park district, three years, about a year and a half with, uh, the supervisor role, and prior to that, I was with the city of Palo Alto, for about twelve years, working on their, actually, I was a park ranger on their baylands, um, so, yeah.
And the last person on our technical advisory committee has not joined us today is, um, Michelle from Caltrans. So, the TAC is made up of members of staff from the agencies represented from the board, and other interested parties, so, we've actually-
Caltrans, too, good.
Caltrans, yes, and we've actually just, um, had the coastal concern to join us, Marilyn Latta, who runs the she's just on the technical come make the presence.
Who's good hands.
And- and I might, of course, Devin, who hasn't introduced himself, but we all know him very well. So- so that's the technical advisory committee. These, as you know, look at them, they're smart, they're connected, every one of them is connected throughout this section of the bay, and so, I, that's why I'm optimistic, I think, uh, we have lots of opportunity. I think it's good that we kinda dished this out as trustees, and kinda go, mm, this, that, this, that, but these guys will synthesize it, I think. Uh, I- I hope that I all sum up, or anybody wants to sum up on this issue, it's an issue, the dues is an issue, but I think you guys can work it out, we can all work it out, uh, um, and- and whether or not we can afford, or whether- And whether or not we can afford, or whether we can write, we can write a job description and hire somebody to do what we want them to do, what this, you know, which is, I think we all said, we would like to continue as an agency, continue to be a leader in the field, continue to have a presence, and continue to work on doing things in our master plan to protect our shoreline, and can figure out how that can get done, you guys could probably...
Agreed.
And, so, I'm confident, and hopefully, and uh... Yeah, pardon me, um, the board members have all spoken?
I have a question. Because the month, I, the, can I finish this aspect out, I just fill on the number... Question is, just for the record, uh, just for the record, um, you asked for a twelve-month extension or a one-year extension, I'm just asking, why not six months, or nine months, or ten months, or whatever, you know, why, why six months? I think I know, but I just wanted on the record.
Yes, I can explain that, Nicole, join in if I'm listening. We believe that we're pretty close within certainly, um, ironing out the language for this new proposal, um, tier dues and, and, it is voting, but we know that that gets... We may not be able to bring something back. Maybe we get close to the holidays, so in order to give us all the breathing room to get... We hope that we can bring you something about sooner than one year. And we won't have to come back for another...
Right, so we've kind of talked this, oh, pardon me, Eddie? Your friend? Right, I was gonna go forward style, in public. Go ahead, Eddie.
Well, I just wanted to make a quick note about one of our council members that just had to hop off, Alexandra Barnhill, uh, she had to hop off, but she was representing Alameda County Mosquito Basin District, and was also a general counsel for a number of JPAs in California. It should have been the chat, but I just wanted to...
Thank you for pointing that out. All right, okay, so members of the public, Matt?
Just briefly, uh, great discussion, and... Strikes me is that there is no one agency responding, and, and, how powerful that could have, which is credibility, nothing can happen. Uh, we need to get safe, we need to get fed, and I said that this organization has is political will, and, uh, a given agency, not generally... But you all are elected folks who are representing... And have a lot of power to be able to gather together, uh, reasons by having that political credibility. How, uh, how your collective still to try and solve problems with no one person? Literally, so appreciate that for...
Do you need a motion for the twelve-month extension?
Well, if we're done discussing, um, um...
Sure, I did want to mention one thing. Heard several recommendations, staff bringing back a job description and some budget proposals about how much a general manager or executive director would cost. Let everyone know, this is a pleasure committee, has been discussed. On a job description, we're pretty... So we can definitely...
Yeah, I think like an annual budget, or some sort of like a... Have an idea what... Can you include a grant writer in that process? And I know that there are grant writers who work in contingency, with the money they get in, but I don't know that's a... Look into that.
Or even, I mean, and I, I'm being cynical here, but I'm also thinking of, you know, what's a deliverable? So what would we perceive the staffing level to be, and what would we accomplish at that level of staffing and that level of cost? And, you know, we keep talking about dues and something like that, but I always like to think about what's the benefit can be, because if we do pick a project, I know the Regional Park District has some pet projects, our Hayward Marsh, it's gonna make us, our job, a lot easier if we decide that's the issue. But I would also like to suggest, and I don't know how we figure it out, TAC-wise, but if, if, I would like, let's, let's hire an executive director and a grant writer, but what are we gonna get out of that? Have we pinpointed one project in, of the master plan? And isn't the hard area down there, what's that? Where's, where's the lowest point? We talked about this, we're gonna have to have a hard barrier down by the old Sky West Golf Course. That's the most vulnerable place, if I'm not mistaken, in the master plan. So if we decide that's what we're gonna protect, Hard's got a lot more juice in this than anybody of this group, maybe they could put their grant writer, so put a little money in that. It's gonna benefit Hard. Or if we're gonna do the Hayward Marsh, that's the one we pick, and I'm not suggesting we do, because I'm from East Bay Regional Park, but if we did, I would expect the full faith and currency of the East Bay Regional Park District, and we do have people that get grants, and we do have legislative people that go and lobby politicians for money, so I don't know how you would figure that out, it's, it's an interesting issue in my opinion, but I think we can... Watch it that way, too. Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, sure, thank you. I just want to point out, I very much appreciate the help you've given. And I want to... I'm absolutely in parallel with everything that you're... Hard, that's a deliverable, that, um, I don't think we can identify, we'll be able to establish, but honestly, that's actually one of the parts to keep, that's like the job structure. To lead a process, to identify criteria, and then to identify that what helps to determine what the project is one, which project is two, we have to put it one in, one out.
What's the money?
We can, we can, there's that, that complicated process, you know, we want somebody with a real... That one thing of, you know, physical criteria, technical criteria, political criteria, technical criteria, it's gonna be, that's gonna be a big...
We also would have to say that person, if we want them to walk along.
The whole path along.
All right, so any more questions, comments? Everybody has had a chance to speak, um, a couple times, we, so that was really item number three, which was discussion. Now we have a potential, or, and we need to do this, and that's the vote on a one-year extension of the current... Uh, it's included in your packet, uh, there is a recommendation from the technical advisory committee, um, that we just do as we are now, for one year, as Devin mentioned, we don't think it'll take a full year, but why come back in three months and go, whoops, we blew it, can we have another three months? So we say a year, hopefully we'll work these things out sooner than that, and get on the road, do a test.
I'm moving the recommendation.
Thank you so much. We have a motion to second, any further discussion from board members? Discussion from TAC members? Discussion from Zoom members, pardon me?
I did want to add one thing about this item, just to be clear, this will extend the current agreement to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, that is, the current agreement between Hard, East Bay Regional Parks, and the city of Hayward. After this vote, Apple has to bring the JPA document back before June thirtieth of this year. So for me, I'll be bringing, looking... We'll have to work with you to bring this before June thirtieth, which of course...
Family in this issue?
Doable?
So, okay, uh, comments from the public? Okay, we have a motion to second, Devin, would you take a roll?
Yeah, trustee.
Yes.
No, two things.
Yes.
Ross, you?
Yes. unanimous, please, thank you very much, thank you for the robust discussion. And we'll move now to the old or new business. First new business next.
Yeah, this is an opportunity for the technical advisory staff, if anyone wants to make... Events, or progress made, or any particular...
And Hard's first mile project, that's being led by Oraloma and... There's a combination of patient offset, that because their filling in, because their project will fill in Hard's existing marsh, they have to do, some of these existing regulations, they have to do offset, so they have reached out to Hard and... Like a soul. And we're meeting with them to, to, to talk to them about the possibility of doing... Our marshes in the north, and east of Frank's west. The whole work there, overall, maybe just strategy for that sort of project. Actually, just recently, actually, we kind of talked, talked through, and I find it was just me. So, we're just going out, talking about it.
Add anything to that?
Was that to me? Thanks. The sound is not ideal. Yeah, no, I didn't want to add anything to that, I appreciate Brian bringing it up, and happy to answer any questions. I was gonna also mention another project that we're involved in, which is a partnership with Cargill, that some of you are aware of, Cargill Salt is building, proposing to build a pipeline from their Newark salt-making facilities to connect to EBDAS system to, over the course of ten to twenty years, discharge, Brian, that has been building up at their site into the bay diluted with, with EBDAS effluent, and we are, we are getting close to completing the E I R for that project, so that's the update that I have. We are hoping to bring the final E I R to EBDAS commission to consider certification in June. And then construction on the pipeline could begin as soon as later this summer. It will mostly be in city streets. There's one segment that's proposed to go across the back of Oraloma Marsh, along the same alignment, actually, as the first mile horizontal levee project, and so we're in the process of working out how to make sure that the pipeline doesn't negatively impact the future plans at Oraloma Marsh. But other than that, there shouldn't be a lot of impact on, on the baylands, but I know folks were interested in that project, so just thought I'd give an update and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else for old or new business? And, okay, um, we'll do, move to board member announcements. Any things from trustees?
I'll just say, when she brought up the horizontal levee, I would love for you to come and see it. We're announcing horizontal levee two point O with UC Berth. Looking it up in the... Hopefully, we can mitigate people.
Other trustees, comments?
No comment.
Uh, I would just like to suggest that, you know, I'm, 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 uh, thank you for the discussion today, thank you TAC members for sharing your resumes and your experiences, I think it fills a lot of confidence with us, some of our newer members don't know you all, so it's great to hear you, hear from you, and also Zoom members that participated also, thank you very much. I'm wondering, um, I'm vitalized or revitalized, I, I'm interested, and we talked about sharing some in-kind services, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, um, those wonderful, wonderful community street parties that Hayward is starting again, we're gonna have three of them this year, and I'm very happy that COVID kind of messed up my social...
You want to have a booth?
I would love to have a booth, and I don't know if we could get volunteers to talk about Haspa, but we could at least get people talking about Haspa, maybe get it, there's a lot of people that go to this festival, they're very...
Maybe is there a plan, uh, the overall plan, their...
Well, we've got a master plan, no one's gonna read it, it's a Haspa deal, we could true, let everybody know we've got a plan to save the shoreline, sea level rise is very popular.
Because I'm tall, I get a free booth, so, a street party, so you can, so you can have my booth, number forty-one, so that's it. So, you need a canopy, and a table, and some chairs, and making, if there's a Haspa banner or something, and be interesting, people need to know what Haspa is, and what people are... I was over talking this afternoon with somebody who was, who's, who wants to do something in the city, and I told her I'm going to Haspa meeting, she didn't know what it was. Good to know this, so June, July, and October.
Thank you very much for that, and we will, we will, and if anybody else has community events that they go to, we might, we might be able to design a Haspa logo, that, I'm thinking of Hillary and Matt Austin from the park district, who does great, incredible work, and I don't know if she's available to do that, oh, we've got an incredible Haspa logo, pardon me. And I've got a T-shirt, oh, I should go.
It's okay.
Sorry.
It is okay.
Soon we all, we can do some great things, so...
I'm, I'm also organizing a birthday party for the United States on first of July at Eden Mansion. All right, at the, at this period, you're welcome to have a booth there, too. Mm-hmm, nobody was doing it in Hayward, so I gotta do it, it's my new country.
Eden Mansion?
Eden Mansion.
Yeah, Hard about that?
And I, I, I have to give Hard, I shout out for Hard, that they're waiving the fees for this, for this Fest Family Festival.
Sure we get, I'm just wondering.
So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It'll come up for a vote, so make sure you vote yes.
I'm sure it'll be fine. I'm just wondering, I know where you live. Thank you. So if, free nun, for the good of the order, oh, pardon me, agenda setting for next meeting?
So, Chair Ross, I'll mention that for the next meeting, which is August tenth, we do have a presentation that's been delayed, something we're interested in, the trouble... Also have a long delay of presentation about, um, the two point O with UC Berth. He'll, he'll be coming, or his students will be coming, and then we'll have some sort of progress made, it's not the actual...
Well, Jim, that's me.
One question that we had is, what is the appetite to have... As Oraloma's boardroom, or... Relatives boardroom? Have some new hybrid technology? Like if they are...
I'm gonna have you, up for you to see.
Will there be cookies?
You know what, I'm gonna go to Trader Joe's and make sure I get some of those.
Okay, all right, I'm fine.
We will also have coffee.
Oh, okay, good.
So it sounds like the next meeting would be with Oraloma's...
Jimmy, did I overcommit?
Now, he's smiling, so he's...
I have to double check to make sure that it's not booked, but, um, we'll have to get back to you.
Yes, you can always tell us.
Yeah.
Great. Fantastic. Uh, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. Thank you all for being here. This is a great meeting. Take care. We are adjourned.